Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started with the regular agenda tonight, we have a special presentation, and I would like to ask the city manager, Mr. Landrum, to take the lead in this presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight is something that is an honor for me to present to the family. I'd like, as I read this, Jared, Mr. Barnett, and Mr. Barquette, if they would come forward. A portion of Lance Road, as council has already approved this, has been renamed McGrath Way in honor of Jeff McGrath. Jeff was employed with the city for 19 years and passed away unexpectedly in January of this year. Jeff was instrumental in bringing the current active development project in this area to the city and worked with the developer, which is Synergy Mills with Jared, and city council to make it a reality. Jeff was a, left a big mark on the city of Beaver Creek as a planning and development director through many projects and growth of the city. He not only left physical landmarks through planning, he left emotional impacts on all those he met and worked with. It is only fitting that the city honors his memory for how he impacted and loved the city of Beaver Creek. Jeff grew up in Beaver Creek and was very active in the community, not only as the city of Beaver Creek Planning and Development Director later in his career, but as coach with his children and many other children in Beaver Creek and a friend to all. The street name will just remind all of us to love Beaver Creek like Jeff did and do all we can for its success. If we do it the McGrath way, I'm sure we will be successful, and that is all that Jeff ever wanted for Beaver Creek. McGrath Way will be something everyone can remember Jeff by. And before I invite up the family here, I'd like to give Mr. Barnett.
I'll be very brief, or I probably wouldn't get through this, but when Pete offered me the chance to speak, I just wanted to say that we couldn't be more excited to have this happen. There was no better advocate for Beaver Creek than Jeff. Nothing could replace his presence and having him here tonight, and I'd be laughing and giggling about some text he sent me. But, you know, any way we can honor Jeff, I think we should be doing it, and I couldn't be more excited that our project's a part of what will be McGrath Way. So, thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Jared.
Joining us tonight is his wife Cecilia, his son Sean, and his mother. I'm sorry, I forget the mother name.
Janet.
Janet. Come on forward, please. And what we're going to do is I'm going to present them with a, the sign, and we're going to get a picture, and they're more than welcome to say anything. I'll turn the mic over to any of them. But in the picture, if council wants to stand up behind when we're doing the picture, that way we'll get a few, a view, a full view of the picture. Come on, curls. Yes, we'll face this way. You guys can hold that. Come on up. All right, guys, let's stand up. Come on, friends. Take your horse off. Well, you guys are, as in Beaver Creek, we're family, and it doesn't end. So, we love you guys.
We would live anywhere else.
We love you guys, and we'll think of Jeff often, that's for sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
That's yours.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Jeff.
You won't have to. Well, this is something that is more than well deserved. This is something that we're all proud that we can be a part of making this happen, and like Jared said, you can't talk very long without getting emotional, so I won't. But it, it's been a real pleasure to have gotten to know Jeff and his family, so I appreciate all that I've learned from them. Thank you. Anybody have any comment they'd like to make? Thank you very much. All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And we have a motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Curran.
Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Curran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. I'd turn this over now to Councilmember Bales for the pledge.
Okay. If everyone could please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me, and then remain standing to celebrate those individuals like Jeff McGrath who have selflessly contributed to the Beaver Creek community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have an agenda before you tonight. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. As submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Minutes. First is the minutes for the September 28th, 2020, regular meeting. Any corrections? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the September 28th regular meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 28th. As submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next are minutes from the October 12th, regular scheduled meeting. Changes? Motion?
Move to approve October 12th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October 12th, 2020. As submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is the work session on October 19th. Any comment?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the work session on October 19th. As submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next is a pre-scheduled presenter. There's not much of an introduction that needs to be made to this young lady, so I would ask Ms. Gussie Jones to come to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Adams, members of city council, Mr. Landrum, and city staff that's here. First, I'd like to say thank you for always allowing me to come and to update you on something that is very, very close to my heart, and that's the Owens Place project. Pete, do you want to play the video first? We're going to, we're going to do a little video first, and then I'll talk. what used to be called Victory Park. But what, what is Owens Place? It's a universal recreation area where people of all ages and all abilities can interact and enjoy each other's company in a safe and a secure setting. That's the formal, that's the formal definition of Owens Place. But what is it really? It's an answer to a need. Back in 2006, in the late fall, a young mother approached one of the township trustees and said, "We have a problem." And the trustee wanted to know what it was, and she said, "I have a son who is three years old and uses a motorized wheelchair and will for the rest of his life." And she said, "There is not a single park in this area that I can take him to because the wheelchair can't traverse gravel or uneven surfaces." And the township trustee looked at her and said, "And what would you like us to do about it?" And without blinking or missing a beat, she said, "We need a park that children in wheelchairs can use." And the trustee thought for a minute and answered, "Find a park, and we'll make it happen." That was 2006. And you all know what happened to the economy in 2007 and 2008, and what happened to local government funds. So, the idea was there, but nothing was done. In 2008, we applied for a grant with the Kellogg Corporation, which we knew we would get because we had such a marvelous idea, but we did not get it. And that set us back on our heels and made us rethink. But we came back with the idea that it was a need, and it was a necessity, and we needed to do something about it. So, in 2011, our state representative and our state senator were able to garner a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources that we could use for planning, but not for construction. And so, we used that to hire an architect and to come up with a plan. And we were still thinking about a neighborhood park that was accessible. Well, somewhere along the line between the time we got the grant and the time we started to actually implement finding a, an architect, we learned about an accessible treehouse in Cincinnati, and to this day, that still sounds like an oxymoron to me. How do you access a treehouse like you have in your backyard? But I went to see it, and then I took the mother and her son, and we went to see it again, and we decided that our neighborhood park had to have a treehouse. And right after that, I learned about Miracle Baseball League fields, and was invited by the Cincinnati Reds to come down and watch when they broke ground for the first one down there, and go back again when the field was finished. And we decided we needed a Miracle Field. We have since changed our mind about that, but I'll address that a little bit later on. So, in 2012, we are hiring the architects. We are going to go ahead and, hopefully.
Here, let me, let me access.
Okay. We are trying, nope, went backwards. Okay. Whoops. Okay, yeah, that'll do. So, in 2012, we built the Shadow Play area. And what is the Shadow Play? If you, you saw it in the overview, they're 10-foot-high, three-sided cubes that have brightly colored panels. We did it for two reasons. Number one, to attract attention so people would know that this formerly passive park was now becoming something else. And we also did it to make it entertaining, and it has become, much to our delight, an educational piece where we hear parents teaching kids colors and numbers and flowers and the different shapes that the Shadow Play panels create on the ground. So, it's wonderful, and it has drawn a lot of attention. So, we did that, and then we go on to the Treehouse Village in 2014. And if you haven't been to Owens Place, I hope you will rectify that pretty quickly. The Treehouse Villages, the first level, has four small, open cottages where children can use their imagination without bounds, our tagline, to create and to decorate. They bring stones and rocks and twigs and pieces of logs that you would never understand how little kids could get them up there, but they certainly do. Next level has just a bench and a quiet area where you can sit and watch birds and trees and watch the kids playing. And the top level is what we call the Crow's Nest, and it was endowed by a woman in Beaver Creek in memory of her late husband. And it allows people in wheelchairs the ability to look down. And if you think about it, most of the time, a person in a wheelchair or on a motorized scooter has to look up at you because you're standing and they can't. So, it serves another need there. 2017, we put in swings, and different kinds. We have accessible swings. We have Big O swings where people who can't sit up can lie down and swing, or kids can stand on it and get the swings going. We have accessible swings, typical swings, a mommy-and-me swing, and then we have a whirl, which is sort of like a merry-go-round without horses, and you spin it, and then you jump on it. And it's big enough for two wheelchairs, for two people to sit on, and it's also big enough for people to stand on, so it's a great interactive device. Then comes the nature area and the instruments, and that was, we got a grant from a local organization in Dayton that allowed us to put in, and I think you saw them when you looked at the video, xylophones, or xylophone drums, chimes, and bells. And they are all right along the concrete pathway so that everybody that's on the concrete pathway can enjoy the instruments and play them. The same year we did that, the Beaver Creek Township Park District, in collaboration with the Green County Parks and Trails, put in accessible restrooms. There are two restrooms. Both of them are equipped with an adult-level changing table so that individuals who have that need can have it done with dignity and with respect as they ought to. We, and then this year, we did the hillside slide area. And we knew it was going to be popular, but we never realized how popular it was going to be. The slides are wonderful. The rocks are great to climb on, but grabbing a piece of cardboard and sliding down the artificial turf is without a doubt the most fun to watch. Last year, we also did, expanded the parking lot slightly. We got two new parking spots, and we now have two handicapped accessible parking spots. And just an FYI, the other day, I was out there with a friend having lunch, and there were four cars waiting to get in. It was sort of like Dunkin' Donuts on Sunday morning, or Chick-fil-A at any other time of the week. They were literally backed up out onto the street, the road, waiting to get in. So, you can see there what we've spent. We've spent 1.1 million, one and a half million dollars. We've raised, whoops, sorry about that. What did I do, Pete? We've raised 1.3 million dollars, and this just gives you an idea of how we've raised the money. The ongoing brick sale, while I was amazed when I went out there the other day and counted just for my own edification, we've sold $30,000 worth of bricks at $100 or $200 apiece. So, that's a pretty good number, and we keep selling them. I have seven bricks in my garage that somebody is going to put in in the next 10 days. So, so what's, 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 what has Owens Place done for Beaver Creek? Well, number one, it's brought a lot of people here. We have, have, we have people that come from Indiana, from Kentucky, from West Virginia. Some of them come for the weekend, take a hotel room, buy food, buy, buy food from either Kroger's or for fast food restaurants, go out and picnic, eat there. So, we, we're an economic draw. We're filling a need. We have done research. We can find no place in the United States where all three of these components are located on the same site. There are accessible playgrounds, and there are some that are bigger than ours. There are accessible treehouses, as I pointed out. There are accessible restrooms. There are, there are baseball diamonds, but not everything on the same site, and so we have filled that need. And so, this is the hillside. This is the last project that we did. And except for the baseball diamonds, which are coming up now, or the field diamonds, the hillside slides were the last project to be filled. The, the artificial baseball diamonds or ball fields, I, you know, it's hard to teach an old dog new tricks. I, we, we planned baseball diamonds, but we have seen in the last two years that there's a need for stuff other than baseball. So, these fields will be able to, to field baseball teams, softball teams, kickball teams, maybe soccer, and maybe, if we get enough snow, even a little bit of cross-country skiing. So, they're going to play a large role in it. So, this is the parking lot, the dugouts, the field. If you look in the back, you can see the accessible restroom, and if I pull up one more slide, you'll be able to see that the gazebo is back. Everything will be accessible and easily accessed. We planned to put in a parking lot. We had hoped, we had thought about not doing the parking lot at the same time, but as you can see, it's just a minor portion of that project, and we decided that the equipment would be out there and that it would be more feasible to go ahead and do the whole thing at once. So, my last slide says the benefits to the city and the surrounding region. Thousands, trust me, of lives have been positively impacted. And if you, if you wonder about the need, there are currently 700 children between the ages of three and 22 who are accessing services through the County Board of Developmental Disabilities, which means that those 700 people will have lifelong disabilities that will have significant impact on their lifestyle. There are also about 1,000 children in the Beaver Creek school system, and some of them are part of that 700, but that are on individual education plans, which means that they have some level of disability. It doesn't include any adults who have disabilities. It doesn't include any grandparents who want to go see their grandchildren. It doesn't include people like James Turpinning, who himself is disabled, and finally has a place where he can go and play with his kids. And it does not include the people that we have seen out there doing therapies after heart attacks and after major surgeries. They think the treehouse ramping is wonderful for them to do that. So, why am I here besides to tell you everything? I'm asking that you, when you're doing your budget process for next year, that perhaps you could find a place to put a line item in to help us achieve the $200,000 that we'll need to finish up our, our baseball, our ball diamonds. I thank you again for the ability and the, and the opportunity to speak, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Gussie. Anyone have any questions or input?
I would just like to say thank you for all the hard work that you do. I know my son and I definitely enjoy that. That hillside slide is so much fun, even for adults. So, I think it's great that you did that. I was shocked by the economic draw from people coming from out of state and out of town. That is amazing. As much as that economic draw is, I think, impressive to me, I think what's most impressive is just the positive impact and that we're meeting a need for people in the community that otherwise could not have been met. So, I think this is fantastic and really, truly appreciate it. I know you very well, and I see you everywhere for Owens Place, and I think this, this park is lucky to have such a great representative and someone who works so hard to champion this. So, thank you for all that you do.
And you know, I appreciate the kudos, but it is such a group effort. There are about 20 to 25 of us that meet on a monthly basis and discuss how we can raise money and how we can improve the designs that we have, and our architect has been great. The Township Park District has renamed Victory Park Owens Place Park, so we don't have to tell everybody that we, it's Owens Place is in Victory Park. We can say it is Owens Place Park now. And just one more comment, and then I'll be quiet and let you get on with your meeting. I ran into a couple, and this goes back about 18 months, that military just moving here from, from Texas, they had not even bought a house yet, and they were out at Owens Place because friends of theirs who were stationed here had told them how wonderful it would be for their little boy who's in a wheelchair. So, I could tell you a million stories, but I won't. Again, thank you.
Well, Gussie, thank you for all you do, and it, one of your, one of your helpers is sitting back there with you, I see.
He is. He is the best asset that we have.
That's one. All right, well, thank you all very much. Anyone else? All right, we will move forward. Next is ordinance resolutions and PUDs. First is ordinance 20-27.
This is a second reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by M. David Reed for the Indian Ripple Road Improvement Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm happy to let council know that we've reached an agreement with Mr. Reed on these properties.
All right.
So, that there's no need for action on this ordinance and the very next one, Tera Developers.
Fantastic. All right. No action needed. We don't have to close it out in any other way? Pete or Steve?
I would, I'm trying to push my phone here. I would suggest, Mayor, that, that you do a motion to remove it from the agenda so we have some, because otherwise, we have a first reading with no finality to it.
Yes. That's what I've asked, why I ask. All right. Y'all heard that. Do I have a motion to remove ordinance 20-27 from the agenda?
So moved. Motion to remove ordinance 20-27 from the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove ordinance 20-27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next is ordinance 20-28.
Mayor, I move to remove ordinance 20-28 from the agenda.
Do you need to read that first?
No.
I'm sorry. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove ordinance 20-28 from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 20-29.
This is a second reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Edna Napier for the Indian Ripple Road Improvement Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Any update on that one, sir? All right, this ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Curran, but I'm going to ask Councilmember Bales to have, take over. Any comments or input on this ordinance? This is the second reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 20-29.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 20-38.
This is a resolution to find that expenditures of the city of Beaver Creek related to COVID-19 are considered eligible according to the mandates outlined in House Bills 481 and 614.
Thank you. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This resolution, before you, started back in March 27th, when the Coronavirus Act and Relief and Economic Security Act was signed into law by the President. Shortly thereafter, the Ohio General Assembly established a process to distribute the federal funds to the local jurisdictions under House Bill 481. The funding mechanism for that initially, in the first phase, was to use the alternative formula for the local government fund, and they recently amended the House Bill 481 with House Bill 614, which provided the next round of distributions to municipalities and the political jurisdictions. Again, what we're doing here is actually framing the, what the expenditures will be spent on and make sure that they comply with the federal and state laws. There's really a three-pronged approach to this that they've established, that one, the expenditures have to be necessary to, that were incurred due to the public health emergency that we were experiencing. They had to be expenditures that were not already accounted for in the city's budget for 2020, and then the other criteria was that basically they had to be used between March 1st and December 30th. They had to be actually spent, but there's actually, right now, a process where that if we don't spend the money by November 20th or haven't encumbered, we have to send the remainder back to the county auditor. So, what we did was, in order to utilize these funds... So what we did was, in order to utilize these funds, we established the criteria that was outlined in the federal and state guidelines. And what we were hoping to do then was to have the City Council acknowledge those uses of the funds and kind of put them into categories and to approve the, and authorize the legislation to spend those funds and, again, compliance with the rules. And I'll just basically briefly go over the four criteria, or five criteria, that we're actually using. The administrative expenses, again, these are in no order as far as the amount of money we're going to be spending, but administrative expenses, just the time and energy to accumulate all the information we need and to get that paid from the funds, which would include the administrative time to pull all that together, to improve telework capabilities for public employees in compliance with the COVID-19 public health precautions. Again, we've actually spent some money on that upfront to make sure that the City Hall functions and we're still servicing the public for the public health and safety for the residents and the employees. Some payroll costs related to those areas that we're specifically dealing with. Again, in most cases, that's the public safety, the police department here at City Hall and the city. Personal protective equipment and gear, everybody's familiar with that. Then there's a couple other ones that are under a public health expense category that include expenses related to social distancing and creating that barrier. Again, plastic glass shields and protection areas for, throughout the city, in all of our buildings. Obviously, disinfecting the areas that we have, providing foggers and other local disinfectants that we've been using constantly since this initially started. Safety measures and expenses for providing sick leave and paid family medical leave to public employees who are directly affected by it. So again, we've had folks, not only employees themselves, but also relatives and things like that, that have created these opportunities that the folks had to actually quarantine themselves under the stay-at-home order. And then, again, all the expenses related to the stay-at-home order, which included, in some cases, having our employees actually following the rules and staying at home and quarantining for specific reasons, and that would all be reimbursable expenses. Unemployment benefits, that was kicked in there too, and any workers' compensation that was provided for specific events. But, so in essence, what the idea was is that as we started to reimburse the city for these expenses from these funds, then we would get the acknowledgement from City Council that, yes, indeed, those met the criteria and, again, would be authorized for us to utilize those funds to reimburse for those expenses. Again, from a pure accounting standpoint, we had to establish a separate fund, that the money came into, the expenses were all, again, the money came in after, we had already incurred the expenses, so we'll end up transferring the money to the funds that were affected by it through this method. But, so this resolution basically establishes that framework to authorize the use of those funds.
I'm sure glad you understand that.
Well, again, the fun thing about this whole thing was it was changing every week.
Absolutely, that's why I say that.
And the state, you know, did a very good job at, you know, again, getting the money out in a short timeframe, because, again, this really affected a lot of folks and political subdivisions, financial budgets, and was, you know, a cost that just we hadn't planned on, so, much like the tornado.
Well, we discussed this a little bit at a work session. Any further comment from anybody? Again, Bill, thank you for, and your staff for staying on top of this. I mean, it's got to be an accounting nightmare in a lot of ways.
It, again, flies away from the normal things that we've already been taught for all these years when they do these things and then go, we'll do it this way. And we're like, well, that's not the normal method that we do it. But, again, we just adapt. So, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 20-38.
Second.
I have a motion to approve resolution 20-38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 20-30.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to appropriate supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020, and to amend ordinances 19-30, 20-06, 20-07, 20-14, and 20-23.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just the follow-up on the resolution, is that correct?
Right. But as you can tell by Diana in reading all of those items, we've had to do a lot of additional appropriations in certifying revenues this year because of all the extenuating circumstances. But, yeah, this is, the first one is actually the accounting for bringing the money into that particular local coronavirus relief fund, so we can get the money certified and then utilize that money to reimburse for the expenses that have already been incurred or will be happening in the near future. The second item is really a, the Parks Lovey Fund. They normally budget about $4,000 from a grant from the Green County Council on Aging. This year, they were generous enough to give us another $1,000, and we're going to be using that to, as part of the $4,000 additional money, to replace the audio system in the great room, purchase a recumbent bike, and purchase a rower for the workout room. So again, we just need to certify that additional $1,000 so that we can spend $1,000 for those particular items.
Okay. Any discussion? This is, by the way, this is an ordinance, it is a single reading ordinance, but it's still the first reading. Is there anyone here tonight that has input on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. So this is a single reading on this ordinance. Any discussion from council?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 20-30.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-30. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next is ordinance 20-31.
This is the first reading of an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing current Chapter 96 Streets and Sidewalks of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and enacting a new Chapter 96 Streets and Sidewalks to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, I give you, Mayor, members of City Council. This update is primarily for the regulations that govern the issuing of permits for contractors performing work along city streets. Some of the items that are being updated, the old provisions pertain pretty much to utilities, but this kind of expands that to include not only utilities, but items like curbs, sidewalks, driveways. The previous code assigned the responsibility to the street superintendent, where this update assigns it to the city engineer, which has been our practice for a number of years, has been run through the engineering office, so to mesh the actual practice with the ordinance. Some of the other features, or it helps to clarify the insurance and bonding requirements for contractors, provides a little bit more flexibility as far as the fees we charge for those permits, where the city manager would have the ability to set those fees on a yearly basis. And lastly, the new update will provide a one-year warranty on work performed within the city right away. So we'll have the ability, if something falls apart within six months after you leave the site, we'll have the ability to go back and make them fix it.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. Are there any comments or questions from council? Anyone?
Yes, I have a few.
Please.
I'm curious as to, because I noticed a fair number of the discussion revolving around 5G small cell towers. Is this related to FCC regulations that have been passed down from the federal government?
Sure.
Related to telecommunications act?
Right.
And like what, how does that have an impact on city locations of 5G small cell towers, et cetera?
Sure, absolutely. There was an ordinance we enacted, I think, fairly recently, maybe last year, with the 5G towers. And that's in your packet, but it's only because it's part of that Chapter 96, I believe. The only changes in that are a couple word changes, I think, from chapter to section or vice versa.
Yeah, okay.
But it's primarily staying as it was approved last year.
So do we, as a city, have much latitude for what we can implement on those 5G towers, or has that been set by the FCC?
Sure. As I understand it, there's a lot of regulations that we have to follow. It was a carefully crafted ordinance to comply with FCC regulations. I know the city attorney, I don't know if he wants to add something to that, but we are kind of hamstrung in a lot of respects.
Yes, FCC, pretty well, there's, as the engineer states, there are a lot of requirements, and there are also a number of, referred to as shot clock requirements, such that if we do not comply with them, and they're very tight timeframes, it's automatically granted. So there's not a lot of flexibility. So as a city, in terms of setbacks from residential homes, daycare schools, we're kind of hamstrung by the FCC on these things?
Right. But we also have some standards we follow where they have to present evidence to us that, as far as like the sphere of influence of the radio waves, it can't be within a certain distance from the tower, stuff like that, to safeguard public safety close to the tower.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for all your work on this. Thanks.
Anyone else? We were, several of us pulled our hair out up here during those discussions, and it was, when you don't feel like you have any authority, that really is frustrating. But sometimes we run into those stone walls. All right, this is the first reading of ordinance 20-31. Anyone wish to sponsor this?
Motion to move ordinance 20-31 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-31 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 20-39.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Green County Council on Aging Transportation Supportive Services and Senior Center Services Grant Funding.
Thank you. You're up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Happy to be before you this evening. This is our annual funding opportunity, where we have the option to apply for a grant from Green County Council on Aging for the operation of our senior center, as well as our senior transportation program. The transportation can be funded for operation, maintenance, personnel costs. Senior center is a little bit expanded, can, the funds can be used for all those same things, as well as some capital purchases. We are requesting that we have the ability to apply for this for 2021. We do anticipate the grant application will be due somewhere in February, with the award coming later that year. I should indicate that there is not a match required for this grant application, and staff is recommending approval for staff to apply for this grant. Happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Sure. Council, have any questions? This is a recurring grant, I believe, and we generally do get it, am I correct?
Absolutely. It is something that we've received for numerous years.
Yes. Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve resolution 20-39. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 20-40.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Step Outside Grant.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of City Council. Again, another recurring grant that we have applied for and received several years in a row. As a clerk indicated, this is through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, part of their Step Outside Grant. Very succinctly, we use this to help purchase fish for our fishing derby. There is not a match as part of this grant. It does provide purchase for local species generally, and helps increase the likelihood that those young anglers have an opportunity to be successful in their fishing venture, which hopefully will lead them to fishing for many more years. Again, Mayor, I should indicate that there is not a match required for this, but we do have other sponsors and funds that we utilize to help run this program. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have this evening.
And this is just for hungry fish, correct?
Yes, indeed.
All right, comments from council?
I would just like to say thank you on this. I've taught all three of my kids how to fish at that location, and we haven't had the best of success always, so hopefully this grant will help us with that. Their teacher is to blame, me.
Somebody wants to be notified when they're dumping.
Yeah, that's it.
All done.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 20-40.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20-40. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is council time. How about we start over with Councilmember Bales?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll be pretty brief tonight. I just want to say it was an honor to celebrate the life of Jeff McGrath by naming a street after him. He had a tremendous impact on not only the city, but the staff here in the City Hall and pretty much everybody he touched. It was an honor to know Jeff, and I'm glad to see that we were able to do that for him. Also want to thank Gussie Jones for making your presentation tonight about Owen's Place. It was very informative and a fantastic destination. I'm glad we have that in our community. Next Tuesday is Election Day, so I just want to encourage everyone to get out and vote. We've got a couple of local initiatives, including our schools, and as well as our income tax initiative, so I'd like just to encourage everyone to get informed on the issues and please vote. And then finally, you know, I know our COVID numbers are rising a little bit in the area, but I still want to encourage people to think locally and shop locally and support the Beaver Creek community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo sentiments made by Councilmember Bales on McGrath Way, a true, very, truly a very important figure in our city, and a great way to honor him. Likewise, I'm thankful for the presentation on Owen's Place. I love taking our kids there. My nieces and nephews, we frequently take there, and like Councilmember Garcia, I too am guilty of the hillside slide, so that is very enjoyable for kids and adults alike. Finally, I had the opportunity to attend the annual meeting for the Beaver Creek Historical Society, and I think it's a wonderful blessing to have so many people preserving what we have in the city. Membership is an important component of the historical society, and at a fee of $20 a year, it's a great way to really build and remember what we have in the city of Beaver Creek. So I'd encourage everyone to go to the website, to look for more information, and to get involved to preserve our history. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Hi, yes, thank you. I think I'll just add on to everyone's comments about McGrath Way and how wonderful it is. I think everyone up here has their own special stories about Jeff and fond ways that we remember him. I know I definitely would probably be chuckling at a few texts from him tonight, so I do miss that. But I know I drive by that area often, so that'll be a great way to remember him. And otherwise, I hope everyone does get a chance to get out and vote, either absentee or in person, and hopefully everyone's staying safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that this Saturday is trick-or-treat, so get out and enjoy the weather. You may want to bundle up. I've been looking at the weather. I think it's going to be a little bit of a chilly one, hopefully not as chilly as last year, but get out and about and kind of enjoy the weather. The next thing I wanted to mention, too, kind of to follow on Councilmember Bales's comments about visiting local businesses and things, the COVID numbers are rising, and so while I do encourage you to get out and about, please just remember to mask up. The numbers are on the rise. There are a couple counties that are teetering on a purple level, and so just keep that in mind as you're visiting the local businesses. And I would also like to remind everyone, obviously, that November 3rd is Election Day, as has been mentioned, but the But the early voting is up and running, and so from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, you can go down to the Board of Elections to vote, and from 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, and 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. So if you don't think that you want to make it out or bear the crowds on November 3rd, I encourage you to vote early. And with that being said, I wanted to, I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. This is our last meeting before the election, and so I felt it very important to discuss the income tax one final time. So I think it's very important to remember how this income tax can impact you as a citizen. And so the biggest question we get is who's going to pay? And so the people who work in the city of Beaver Creek are the ones that are going to pay the income tax. As an estimate, about 75% of all people working in Beaver Creek are non-residents. So that would be a tax on those 75% of individuals. The people who work somewhere else without an income tax would also be paying. So people such as myself, who work at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, anyone who works in the township out in Bell Brook, those communities are income tax exempt, and so you would be paying the 1% income tax. What I do think is important to remember is while this is a 1% income tax, something that you previously haven't been paying, it is one of the lowest in the surrounding areas. And businesses whose profits are generated in the city of Beaver Creek, including rental income. So who doesn't pay? Any resident working outside of Beaver Creek that are paying 1% or greater will receive a 100% credit. So as I alluded to, those individuals who are working, for example, in the city of Dayton, the city of Kettering, you will be granted the 100% credit, and you will not be paying any excess to the city of Beaver Creek. Additionally, any retirement income, pension income, social security benefits, all of those are exempt. As I stated, this is a very, Wright-Patt is only civilians. So anyone that is active duty military, that pay is also exempt. Intangible income, such as dividends, interest, capital gains, those types of things are not taxable. Alimony and child support, unemployment, and then anyone who makes less than $1,000 a year. So the one question that many of us are getting is what is the city plan on spending this money on? And I think essentially the way that you need to think about it is this is a balance between the two. So we're trying to balance the property tax with the income tax. We don't want to rely so heavily on these property tax increases, especially as other property taxes, such as the schools, continue to increase. And so first and foremost, what we will do is we'll remove that street operations levy, which is a $3.4 million street levy that is, would be on the ballot in November of next year. So if this income tax passes, that will be removed. Additionally, we have general municipal operations, maintenance, equipment, anything that you really think of when you're thinking of operating a city, that's where this money is going to go. Like I said before, it's going to eliminate or reduce the need for future city property tax levies, and that's really our goal here. And then protect and promote public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens in the community. So supporting our local fire, or local police departments, as well as the streets, fixing potholes, fixing curbs, fixing your sewer drains, those types of things. As you are voting, if you are looking at the ballot, perhaps you have some questions, perhaps the information that you have been provided, you kind of still are feeling on the fence about it, please do not hesitate to visit our website. There's a lot of great information there. There's an income tax calculator. You can see how this would impact you and your family. Additionally, there is a frequently asked questions. There are several question and answers on there. And then if you would rather talk to someone, I know that all of us are very open to talking with citizens. Our email addresses and our phone numbers are listed on the city website. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us or to reach out to city staff. And I think the one last thing that I wanted to touch on is I am very, very thankful, staff. I know we went through a couple of different grants and things today, and while it is wonderful that you are out and you are getting these grants, this is just one of those things, a city that relies on grants is, it's difficult. It's difficult to run a city that way, because you don't know how long those grants are going to be available. And so this is just yet another way to help supplement the income in the event that those grants were to ever fall away. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, I guess I could just say ditto to a lot of things, which seems to be my lot in life here, but that's okay. On trick or treat, there was, someone contacted me today, said that there was something in the Dayton paper that is four to six. It's actually six to eight here in Beaver Creek. It's always six to eight. So if there's any confusion there, we'll make sure that that's done. I think it's great that we were able to name the street after Jeff. I think it's a fitting tribute to him. The fact that there's a donut shop on the corner probably would make him real happy, so. And Gussie, thank you very much for coming and giving us your presentation tonight. I've talked to, in another part of what I do, I've talked to several people from out of town that have come here specifically just to utilize the facility there. They'll just drive in and spend the day, and I think it's great to have that here in our, in our city. It's good to see the chief back. Welcome back, sir. And along those lines, there's something, a couple of weeks ago, when it was my turn to do the prayer, and that, we talked about human trafficking. And today, the Attorney General informed, Attorney General of Ohio informed us that 50 law enforcement agencies from across the state led an operation that resulted in the rescue of more than 100 human trafficking survivors, and 177 arrests. That's a huge undertaking, and for the state of Ohio, they're listed as one of the top human trafficking states out there. But they've really been pushing hard to get this corrected, and I want to thank all the law enforcement people that are involved in that, for working on that. Also, it was brought up, voting day is next Tuesday. Please go out and vote. It's your right, it's your duty, and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And as you said, it's just about all been said. I had the pleasure of having lunch today with the, our neighboring mayors, Riverside, Fairborn, and Xenia. And as always, we just relax a little bit and let our hair down and talk about what we're doing in each community, and it's always interesting. And we're all mostly dealing with the CARES Act money right now, and so their, their accountant's going through the same thing as we, you are, Bill, so thanks again. The USO on base just reopened. Had the pleasure of going out there and representing the city. It's always a fun place to go if you ever get a chance, to interact with some of our airmen that are, that use the facility on base. And lastly, I just want to add one more comment on the issue one. And you know, it's not always about who pays or who doesn't pay. It's not about how much this is going to be and how much that is going to be. We have our own city staff that's going to pay. We have each, some of the people here on this, up here are going to be paying. It's, we'll all be paying on this salary, but this, and some others with other salaries. But it, it's what's right and what is the wisest move for this community. We are now the 22nd largest city in the state of Ohio, and the state gives different jurisdictions different means to raise funds. And the state authorized every city in the state of Ohio to be able to have an income tax. Townships can't have an income tax. Counties can't have an income tax. But cities can. And they've done that so that everybody doesn't get burdened with the same type of tax. Every political jurisdiction doesn't tax the same way. So we need now, at our size and our status, we, it is the smartest move for the city to take advantage of that means that the state allows us to take advantage of. So I ask you all to really take a close look at issue one, and exercise your right to vote come next Tuesday. So, thank you very much. Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to start out with congratulating our finance department with the Auditor of State Award. Their, the finance department achieved the Auditor of State Award with distinction for the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, for fiscal year ending 2019. The auditor presents this award for financial reporting according to the general accepted principles, accounting principles. The city has also, has received a state auditor award with distinction in nine of the last 10 years. There's only, you know, 5% or so of the cities that get this kind of an award, and we are blessed with a great finance staff as a, you know, I used to be one, and they called us bean counters, but somebody has to count the beans, and we have very good bean counters that make sure the beans are in a row and accounted for. And especially during this COVID time, that it's very important that we have this good financial accounting. So congratulations, Bill, and to staff. Job well done. Trick or treat, that was mentioned. I do want to strongly stress, because the phones are ringing off the hook, at this point in time, unless the governor or unless Green County Public Health would say, nope, it's on. Trick or treat is on. But if the governor would come down with an order, or Public, Green County Public Health would count, come down with an order, that could change things. If things would change, of course, I'm sure it'd be all over the news and social media and everything else, because it just wouldn't be for Beaver Creek alone. It would be probably more widespread. We strongly encourage all residents to follow all guidelines and mandates established by the state of Ohio and the governor and the county health, public health department. So there are some safety tips, you know, please wear a mask. The mask of your outfit doesn't count, so wear the cloth mask as part of your costume. One thing I did want to say, I'm not going to read all these, but these are just hints, is to also, we've been getting calls where people are asking, you know, that don't want to participate in it, and it's simply, we understand. I think everybody understands. So please, if, if you're a resident and you don't, you're, you're, you're subject to catching COVID, you're elderly population or so, please shut off your light, keep your light off, and no problem whatsoever. Catch you up with you next year, right? So let's rather be safe than sorry. So nobody's going to think anything of somebody that didn't have a light on because they feel they can't participate. So just keep that in mind. But there's a lot of people that wanted to participate, and, and younger and healthier, and, you know, feel like they're not. I still would strongly suggest that even those that feel, you know, while they, old country song, 10 foot tall and bulletproof or something like that, please still follow the guidelines and protect yourself and others. And some of these, again, wash your hands, stay six feet away. A lot, lot of good hints, and we may put these out there for others to view. Last thing on my list tonight was about the polling location. It will, we were notified today that the senior center is a polling location, which we thought it would be, but it kind of got quiet and we didn't hear from them. But you know what's going on on, by Dayton, on Dayton-Zenia right there. I talked with our engineer, fine engineering, city engineer, tonight, and they will be where the red is on Dayton-Zenia. The entrances are currently blocked. We are going to bring that up to gravel grade, so it can be used. But please, to enter, if your polling location is at the senior center, you will be able to go in the back way off of Southview or off of North Longview Street. You'll be able to gain entrance into the parking lot. Again, it should be gravel entrance through the regular front from Dayton-Zenia. But if you prefer not to go through, I can't promise how smooth of a transition that will be. They'll, they'll try to do a good job, won't they, Jeff? But just wanted to let everybody know, we're going to put this out on social media. We just, this is just like 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock today, we found out this information. So just wanted to bring it forward, so we can get everybody a heads up that uses a senior center as a polling location. Just be aware that you may be best to use alternative entrances, such as the rear or the side entrance. But we will try to have the front entrance as smooth as possible. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, the agenda, it says citizen comment. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Don't all rush to the front. Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.